Or rezoning request, this is Bello Woods project. What we refer to the Bella Woods project. This is the north side of Huntsville Brown's Ferry. This item had been continued as well. This is a thirty nine acre. We'll just give a moment to have Samantha do her magic. Let me know when you're ready Samantha. You ready? All right. Great. So this is the system. It is East Holiday Boulevard. You've seen before, but we'll run through this just quickly, just to refresh everyone's memory. Again, thirty nine acres, next please. Other these are currently zoned ag. As you can see, to the right or to the east of the property is called, is owned RC two. Mr. Spencer spoke earlier, there's a property he was referencing. We refer to for to property as Bella Woods East now that they've acquired the thirty nine acres to the west. Next please. And they're proposing to change the ag to RC two and continue. So this is their conceptual development plan again. A cluster zoning requires a development set plan. So originally Bella Woods East came through for zoning and was approved, supported by Planning Commission and the council. And then the developer was able to acquire the thirty nine acres. Thirty nine acres had been a contract with someone else. That deal fell through and the property owner reached back out to the developer and said, hey, I'm interested. So they've been, their development concept is to try and integrate the two two projects. And on the thirty nine acres, there's a hundred and four single, single family house proposed. However, if the thirty nine acres goes forward, they then modify east side and reduce the lot count, count east side. So they're going to put smaller units on the west property and more larger units on the east side. And so there's a net increase of seven, seven units overall between the two projects. The eleven acres of open space on the east property and the overall density of the, or the density of the west side is two point six four units per acre. Density of both the east and the west side is two point one four. It is a low density project meets growth policy three. And they're having a question from council member Denzey. Lilia and I've already given her the slide, but of where the roughly eleven acres of open spaces on the Bella Woods side. And you can see it's divvied up into four different areas. And the reason that we even consider, say, area four as visible open spaces because there are trails that connect the east side to the west side. So those usable open spaces, not just a little plunk of green that nobody's able to benefit from. From, Nancy?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sure. Go back Samantha.
To that other area?
Yes.
For the public in order to also take advantage of this?
Yeah, I have a, have a ask for that. I'll get to that and we'll zoom right through. So we are recommending approval. We think this is consistent with the growth policy compatible with the surrounding areas preserving open space. And it's to expand a residential node that would support commercial development at Village at Oakland Springs. Samantha, can you, it's probably the last, well, I don't know which slide it is, but there, but there are slides beyond this. Keep going, keep going, right there. So do you see, this shows those, I'm just in the, the walking paths. Do you see the red dash line? So that represents pedestrian trail, trail, you'd be able to get up into that area. If you can go back then, then please. Yeah, that, I wanted to, a couple of comments. It's been stated that this needs to follow the west side master plan better. The west side master plan had designated this as neighborhood had mixed use, the density in the neighborhood mixed uses twelve to twenty to an acre. So if we follow the map and required somebody to develop to that density, you'd be looking at a minimum of about four hundred and sixty eight units on the thirty nine acres alone. Now, when properties actually develop, they never develop at their maximum density because there's roads and there's open space. But let's call, and let's say that they actually put commercial on the front edge of property. And so let's just assume five acres gets developed with residential out of the thirty nine. You're looking at about three hundred units compared with an increase of seven units. So one of the things, and we talked about the planning commission meeting when this came forward. One of the things that we heard from previous council. After the west side master got, plan got approved was that there was not a notice in seeing density on the west side side in particular, wanting to see more low density city development. And, and so one of the things that we've been working on and we bring any kind of zone changes through to the planning commissioner, the city council, is evaluating that west side master plan in that text of, you know, we want to, we want to plan, we want to follow our plans. However, based on all the conversations with the growth committee, we want to reduce the total number of units built out in this city. And in order to do that, you have to downzone effectively. You have to reduce density. So in this area, when it was designated for twelve to twenty units to an acre. And we're looking at, can you go previous slides? Because I don't remember the number right there. On Bella Wood West, instead of units to the acre on Bella Woods West, we're talking two point six four units acre. That is going in the direction that previous council, starting in twenty seventeen, mean basically told us they wanted to go. And so, and so that is a primary reason why we submitted that. Your planning commission also supported this project. It was a, we had one member absent, so it was a seven vote to support the zoning of this property. Your planning commission is very experienced. No, no, that was on the master plan. This is for the zoning. But it was a six, six, two vote west side master plan, a seven, one vote for the zoning. Your planning commission is really experienced and I've been, been doing this work a lot of years. And, and I have to say that one of the things that Madison really benefit from is its planning commission. They're just solid, all their stuff. And they really look, look out for the best interest. And I truly mean, they're, they're just a really good group. And if a project can come through that commission with all of the history and many of the commissioners are former council members have, you know, seen Madison grow through these, through the nineties. If that commission is, was your land use advisor body as you, yes, this is consistent with, you know, we think is good land use. I strongly encourage you to listen to them because they've, you know, staff has its professional opinion. But they wear, you know, a different hat, so to speak, and but they're an important part of this, this land use conversation. And so I really encourage you to take their recognition seriously because they're very deliberative. There are a lot of testimony about traffic, about drainage, about water, about growth. And, and they really take their duty seriously. So can't underscore enough how much, how much this really benefits from that commission. But, so I wanted to give you a little bit of, I guess, context from the west side master plan and how dense. Because the west side master plan was predicated on smart growth. It was dedicated on concentrating development in certain areas to create codes. And even though this density is less than what was forecasted in the west side master plan, we, we think that it's putting residential where it needs to be, which is, which is really to start the node that we expect to see at Village at Oakland and Springs. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions before.
Love being a public here, hearing like we did a lot. If you spoke previously, it's already noted, noted. If you something new, or you just spoke before and you'd like to address council, please, please come up.
And address, but I think you know it, BB, I should one on nine Radisson Lane. When I came to Madison, we were two thousand people. I have seen it grow and grow and grow. And I would say a hundred percent of people in this, even myself, sitting here today are letting, as is built on cotton property. And in the fall of the, of the year, our streets here were covered with cotton. They bale the cotton in the fields now, they don't have to bring it through the city. But I mean, it is just fabulous. And as we've grown, I've seen it go and grow. And people would ask me, BB, what would you, would you like to happen to Madison? And I'd say the excess of thirty thousand people. But I've come to like it. Schools are wonderful. My children didn't have, not go to the city school system, they were in the camp, which was fine. But, but I don't know that I'm for this or not. And I mean, you, you, people have grow, cities have grow. But I think education is terribly important and evidently. I don't want to say the council, but I really don't think there's enough citizen input to these things. I don't know how you do it. When I first came here, once a month, right every citizen, every household, let me put it this way. Every household in city got a copy of the minutes previous month or that month. And, you know, we, we ended up with a call, but that's another question. I didn't want to, when we decided to have the school system, I guess the city is going to have to support more supporting to the, to this city if we're going to have more houses. And I think the first would be built of the roads. I said, traffic is my problem. Ninety nine, in eighty nine, the citizens, I did have a list of the population at different times, but I couldn't find. We raised a million thirteen. I would say about in eighty nine, we probably hadn't had six thousand people. I don't know. Thirteen, and we didn't have a school, the school system was not the other thing. But we raised it, you know, for water and soil. In ninety three, we raised eleven mills for the schools. In oh nine, we raised it ten point five for schools. In nineteen, we raised twelve. And, you know, the citizens are looking after the schools fantastically. But as we get more houses, as I say, we put two cars on the road for every house. And I was always told that every house costs money. Yes, they had property tax and that's wonderful. But I, I really don't know what to do. I am torn between, I hate to see this getting be such a big deal about, you know, whether we're going to put more houses or not. But we have to have roads to drive on. Only way it used to be a cotton field now, but it wasn't when I, I mean, when, when I moved here. I lived Nolan Hills and now I live, live in Radisson. But I don't know what to tell you. I just don't know what to tell you. It's, I hate to see the city get bigger and bigger and bigger. I cannot imagine, and I probably, probably won't let see it eighty, or whatever, seventy five, maybe it's supposed to be. God. But the more houses you get, the more problems you go in.
Ms. Denzey, Councilwoman Denzey, said that she spoke with Gary, the city, specifically about Hardeman Road. And I'd like to know, know what's said about Hardeman Road.
There's Gary.
And what's the basis, what's the basis for that, please? So it's based on lanes and configuration. What about the volume of cars that pass through us through in the time of day? Was that taken into consideration? So do you know when the last time somebody came out Hardeman Road?
We need to stay on, on Brown's Ferry. We need to stay on task on.
Okay, it's all related. I don't know how much time you spent out there, sir, but I, I live out that way.
I do, I do also, but they're, they're very, very close.
Okay. So the, there's certain times of day, yeah, there's no, there's no issues at all. The problem is in the morning on weekday, from the hours of seven until about eight forty five. It is a very congested mess. And have all kinds of high school students driving right through there to James Clemens High School. And I understand that the city's position is nothing to see here with Hardeman Road. I beg to differ. And I would encourage you, city, to spend some, some time recently, I don't know, know how long this data, this capacity data was, is from, but it's a, it's a mess. I mean, if you, if you can't come out of your own neighborhood, that's a problem, that's not fun and nothing to see here. And this is before any of the houses have been built. And this, and this is for all of those, as someone mentioned earlier, a thousand houses on the, on the side of county line.
One thousand five hundred.
And those are, where in the process, processing built are they?
They're in various stages.
Pardon?
And various, and you, I have.
So it's going to get worse. It's not good now and it's going to get worse. So I, I can't speak to where Gary got his information, but I disagree with it. And I would ask you, please, take a look at it. I don't think it's current and I don't think it's complete and I don't think it's accurate.
Thank you.
And one more thing, as long as I'm up here. I would expect that all the council members would be professional up here in the way that they talk to each other. And what I have seen, seeing in the way that some council members have spoken to here is, leaves me feeling somewhat sad. So I would encourage all council members to speak professionally to the same way that they would to one as they would to another. Thank you.
Hello, Ian Mike Sheehan. I'm going to get capacity issue on roads. Other than mentioning that, you know, I did address that in my previous presentation. And Zalir is correct, you can measure, I guess I'm not ignoring the traffic capacity on road issue. You can measure a lot of different ways, but if you're measuring in specific time increments, then you get a flawed picture. It's kind of like when Dr. Nichols said earlier, we'll be at ninety seven percent capacity for the schools and do time. It's ninety percent, ninety seven percent capacity overall. That might mean we're at a hundred and ten percent capacity in the elementary school and under capacity in the middle schools. You've got, you've got to set that down. It's the same thing on the traffic roadways. We've already demonstrated the shortcoming in our transportation master plan. That show that the data going in doesn't actually predict the capacity at Russia, Russia in particular. We've heard real world evidence tonight, not just Ms. Zalir, but from the gentleman that lives off of Hardeman Road about, and you saw in the pictures and you've driven it yourselves. I'll just get past that point because we, we all agree that there's a traffic problem. I don't know why we don't acknowledge that publicly. I'm saying, and this is all related, Mr. Shaw, to come point, I'm just, I'm going to get, I'm kind of witnessing, you know, and this goes back to the previous meeting. Someone said earlier where you made the comment, we all know how to vote. Let's, let's just get on with it. Frankly, I wanted, wanted us to get on that night as well. If you were to public and honestly, I get a million texts throughout the meeting, not from y'all. But, but if you were to poll public, we would have predicted exactly how the voting could go down tonight. Exactly. In fact, we did, we did to go before this all started. There's a part of me that feels like we're wasting our time and wasting time and energy coming up here. There's a perception that, you know, there's the saying, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. The perception is that's the incumbent administration and that the newcomer administration is supposed to be, if it ain't broke, let's improve it. But, you know, so change, change may be inevitable, but we control the change. Peter Drucker says, the best way to predict your future is to create it. We've done that. We've done that. We've got a comprehensive plan back to nineteen ninety five. That's, that's old. It's been updated, updated. Last time it was updated, you might know this, Mr. Sefer on the planning commission, two thousand, thousand six. Okay, if you look through that, it's obsolete. It taught our western boundaries being located at certain roads and roads and that. But that's, that's, that is our strategic plan. We plan, we got the west master plan that addresses part of our city. The comprehensive plan is the only thing that we can call a strategic plan. It was, it was built in ninety five. Many, many, many provisions that are completely outdated. He says, we came up with a plan, excuse me, Mr. Powell says, we came up with a plan a few years ago. Well, we did. We came up with a pretty good plan and you defended it. And I agree with you, with you. I, you know, and I've talked before about having a strategic plan. I've gone, gone back through reading multiple times and read through the west side master plan, the growth policy. I could quote provisions that better than anybody on stuff. But we did come up with a plan a few years ago and it's a darn good, good plan. Mr. Sefer says, we want to manage growth in a predictable way. How do we predict? We have plans. So if the plans aren't good, why are we changing them now? What I'm, what I'm perceiving and frankly, a lot of the audience is perceiving is that we're not looking for, we're not, not, we're not changing because we have to change. We're, we're changing it willy nilly. Just we don't have, don't have a rational, rationalizing to ourselves about why we're changing the plan. We're making excuses, but we don't have legitimate rationale for changing the plans. There's a deflection. Every time somebody gets up here and addresses about the roads or about the schools, you know, every time those are challenged and then the facts prove those is right. Nobody on council or on staff has said, well, no, no, the, well, actually, Mr. Chanel actually did just say the reality is just adequate. But we all know the reality is different. But it's a deflection when we start attacking the messenger rather than addressing the issue being presented. And that, we, we're getting a lot of that. In terms of, of, of the plans, I would, I would ask, as Mr. Pennell said, if, if we have a plan and you defended it in, in proportion, because I honestly believe the west side is not perfect, but I think the west side master is a darn good plan. If it's, if it's, if it's given, why are we changing it? If it's not a plan, then we come up with a better, better comprehensive plan, as Ms. Bartlett has stated. We don't change plans again just because we have to, you know, former soldier. When we go to war, we don't, we don't country X and say, well, well, let's go drop paratroopers in on country X, X, because there's a conflict there and say, you know, as they're dropping out of the air, whoop, let's switch over to country Y. We do it because there's a compulsion. Mr. Spencer's a developer. When we're building a house or neighborhood, we don't, don't go and say, well, I'm going to start building, building. I've got an architect text plan, I have a city permit, I'm going to build a single family house. And then in the middle of that, without, without any given rationale, without compulsion, we're deciding, well, I'm going to build an auto shop. And there has to be a reason for our changes. Let's not just make excuses just to change. Let's have valid rationale to do it. And again, I don't think we have rationale. My perception is we're rationalizing. And again, that's, that's predicted being we knew exactly how everybody was going to vote. If the plan is good, stick to it. We haven't identified any problem with the west side master plan. The Barnett's Crossing, again, it's very applicable for a lot, a lot of reasons. I love that. West Side Master Plan has, has provisions that allow us to build that exact same property in the locations. Same thing with, with Bella Woods. There's, there's probably no more prime example of the residential that you guys swore that you would prevent. And I can go back and see the exact date, it was just a few months back where you swore you were going to prevent, prevent residential creep. There's no more prime example of that than, than, than Bella Woods. Unlike Barnett's, they're offering us a variant, genuine multi-generational housing, legitimate multi-generational housing that is a new option and a desirable item for us. Bella Woods offers us nothing than what we've already got. We're just extending out. We're doing residential creep on what we've already got. What's on the horizon is Mr. Spencer's. What's on the horizon? Bella Woods was not the Mazzatoy plant. Bella Woods is in, or excuse me, Barnett's Crossing was in the middle of Huntsville. That horizon, rural transitional area was because of its boundaries with the industrial circle zone that we were trying to buffer from residential that now we're not going to be able to. It was buffering from some other things. We've just, just taken that. But what's on the horizon for Bella Woods? I can tell you exactly what's on the horizon for Bella Woods. We're giving up with this decision. We're giving up commercial property. And what's on the horizon, two hundred meters down the, down the road, Huntsville's big intersection where they're going to have, have a commercial property. Where Huntsville is going to have revenue generating property. Because we just gave ours up because, because we're going to opt more of the same type of housing that we've already got through this residential. So what's, what's compelling us to give our own commercial opportunities, our own revenue generating opportunities? And to abandon a plan, it's a darn good plan. There's nothing compelling telling us to do this. And oh, by the way, the back of the napkin thing that Mary Beth was mentioning, you know, I'm, I'm back of the napkin things before. I recall an instance where somebody did a back of the number, back of the napkin drawing on one thing. The next, the next day was four hundred thousand dollars from scratch. So I caution on back, back in, back in napkin things, but I would, I would. If, if we're looking to genuinely reduce the density on some things, why is it an RC two project? Why not an RC one? It's for density. You get the same effect, it lowers the density. We're not considering things like that. But again, we're giving up a lot. And I would ask, I would ask you, why giving, why are we giving up a good plan? What's our compulsion? We're just rationalizing to ourselves that somehow this is, this is a good idea. Let's buy into more of what we've already got. I don't know that I'm going to have any, any effect on that because again, we kind of predicted where the voting was going on. Going on that. You're on the, if it ain't broke, don't fix it, or you're, it ain't broke, let's improve it. But, but I hope you give it consideration and I thank you for your.
Thank you.
Hello, the Leon Litz McGee here again. My councilperson, Mr. Powell, I live Edgewater and we've had a lot of exciting things over there, Zert Road. And all the exciting, I'm excited. Hopefully baseball will happen this, this spring. But because I said this last time too, and he was, I live on the east side, but the west side side matters to me first, first because I care of our whole city. But second, because those kids now, unless it has changed, are currently those empty lots, lots are zoned to put the kids in our schools. Discovery Middle, Rainbow Elementary, that's not a high school, but in Bob Jones. I, at some point, that would have to change if we're getting hundreds and thousands of abortions. But most of the people on my side of town don't realize that, don't know that. So I'm here speaking for my own, my own self and a lot of friends and people that I know here. One thing I said for, and I'm specifically talking about this Bella, Bella Woods development. I'm not against this development and also the, the other one that you guys just approved. It sounds great development and I like the idea of bringing in different, different things other than residences. I mean, other than single family residences. But this shouldn't be something that we should be fighting over. It shouldn't be something that year after year, we have to keep coming up and saying the same thing over, over again. And like Mr. Powell said, three, three or four years ago, you worked with the school board to kind of slow down growth. And thank you for that and thank, thank you for that, thank you for that, that. Everyone who agreed, and thank you for that, for those that agreed to, to it. I've been up here off and on for ten years, talking about schools. I'm active in the city PTA, I'm active in most school PTAs. And it's literally, literally like a record. And I said some of this last time, but you guys were not, were not yet, eventually. And so we, we have to do, Ms. Bartlett is saying, and have a plan. Councilman Seifert said, the only thing that's constant is change, right? We know change is thing. And then Mr. Powell says, but now here's the school board friends, people coming back saying, we just, we just changed it years ago. Now you want us to change it again? Yes, change has to be constant. If we want to be the best that we want to be, which we love being best, we, we consistently change. Keep up with progress and do, and do what is best. It's kind of funny how people keep talking about traffic. I, I'm originally from Florida and this traffic doesn't really bother me, but on our, on our side, it's not, you know, when ours is open, it's a little worse, but it's not that bad. But on the east, the west side of town, I know it is, but, but I think it's kind of like an unspoken thing that we're all saying, well, traffic is a problem. Nobody wants to say it. That's the same, the same thing about schools, in my opinion. Our schools are fantastic and even with little funding, little resources, they do, do fantastic things. But they are, are taxed too much. There's too much burden on us already now with no new kids, kids yet. We have all these houses that are already approved. Will be more kids in the city of Madison and in the city of Triana. And that will be, will be a problem. Sure, our, our, I mean, I mean, Dr. Need to figure out a way to educate all of our kids. But I want my kids educated in a way that had to be figured out and do this and this and this and switch the schedule. And this teacher has to leave for her, her break so that student, this kid can come in for this class, class. And that's ridiculous and that's not what we expect in Madison City schools. And so we do need to look at this plan again. I think the west side plan is good. And I think that there's a lot of great things that the previous council did. And I think there's probably a way we can, can still allow residential homes in. But let's also, also how to properly fund schools and to properly fund, fund the street. When Dr. Nichols got up here and said, you know, in a very, very friendly kind of way, because there's, I believe, if I were, I were him, it should be a hard place to come speak. Because there's a very, very line between wanting to say, we're so awesome, our schools are amazing. Because we want people to come here and to support. Because we want people to come here and to support our schools, but then admitting, oh, but yeah, we do have these problems here, here, here and here. That's a hard thing to do. But if I were him coming up here, I mean, what I'd him say, and you guys can decide, if you heard, is we'd handle some more students from these new developments, whatever new developments happen. But at some point, we can't, and we, meaning the school district, will be back up here asking for you to help us in this, as he said, avenue source. That means money. Like we will need more and more money to pay for more teachers aides, to pay for, for the, the cafeteriums, to build more schools. I'm okay with paying our own property taxes, but not all of, all of my neighbor. Everyone is not okay with that. And honestly, that we shouldn't necessarily have to do that. We can figure out as a community, assess either inter-entice development agreements, something that helps to offset the burden that the new students will, will put on our schools. So I'm not telling you that I know the right answer. I don't know if particular development is the right one, which might say, yes, this is a great one. I'm not telling you it's the wrong one because I don't, I don't know. And I don't expect any of you to know the answer either. But what I do, I do expect is for us all to be on the same team and for us to communicate better. And all of us figure out what is to be done without personal anger or bad feelings and without anyone feeling insulted. I'm, I would not want to have this job. It is so hard what you all do. I'm so grateful, grateful last council, because it's so much better than the previous council before that, with regard matters to me, which is schools. And I believe this new council, in the four years, I really believe you guys will make some amazing change. Like Ms. Dennis said, the next four years, people might want to vote you all back, all back in. Or if we get new council members then, they might say, this was a great, great plan, let's continue it on. I mean, you guys have such, such a great channel to do this. So I don't want to tell you not to, I don't want to tell you how to vote, I just want to tell you that we're on the same team. Let's all stop covering our eyes at the traffic and school overcrowding. And let's just be realistic and realize, these are issues that are their problem. We're smart people and smart community. We can figure out a way to grow and plan in a smart way, can still be number one or number two or whatever it is. Sorry that we are, so thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Grant.
Everybody already knows how they're going to vote. I'm in agreement with that. And I want to comment, when we talk about this plan and I am no X plan. There is the letter of the plan and the spirit of the plan. As we move forward, whatever happens tonight, I think we need to go back and look at what the spirit of the plan is. Because we can manipulate math, we can manipulate any number of, any number of things from the verb to the plan forth. But the spirit of the plan never changes. So we need to, we need to look at. And at the risk of being inappropriate and inappropriate, and so I'm going to add the comment of some residents that have spoken before me. This is the third or fourth, fourth meeting I've been to. And as a leader, I'm a financial advisor, I managed before, I hold several positions. The conduct of the leaders before me concerns me, the way that you approach each other. No women, nor men here need to speak on their behalf. And none of the, none of the employees of the city need me to speak on their behalf. But I've heard some back and forth, they're disheartening. I've heard some of the citizens, as they speak, receive feedback that is, is defensive rather than informative. And sometimes, as a leader, things just don't merit a points. They just, thank you for your time. If you don't, you know, everything that need to be defended. So I would just ask that we all, from our side, the students that are speaking, I think that we all try to qualify our statements since this is not a purse act. And I'd ask that y'all do the same. And I appreciate each and every one of you for what you're doing. I'll yield back.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Grant.
That'll close public hearing and we'll move, see if we have a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion is in a second. Looking forward to council discussion.
Well, I can just bring out the pages and talk, talk and read them. And this if it applies, still looking at the macro on this one too. But you know, I lived, lived house, it was a five hundred year soul. It still, still had the two houses in the, in the door. There were three lanes in this little town. And it literally had not really changed, changed five hundred years. We didn't even have a pub, it was in England. But it was the best community to live in because everybody was close. But some things are okay to be old, some things okay to move, move slow. Now I've walked Oakland Springs. I think it's going to be, going to be a wonderful development in that area. I am so excited to see them having the commercial with the houses and all that. I think that is great. And then I looked at the other side of the road and I go, wow, Huntsville's got all that property, but it's going to be, going to be all commercial. And then I look where we are and have a residential. And then we have a strip of land that the master plan said was used. Could we reach out, think above? There is a lot of that over England where you have the little shops in the bottom and people being up top. You can call them higher density, but they're usually like, you know, single adults and stuff. It's not, we're going to have a whole, whole family living up there. And I think it was Planning Commission, I think it was Tommy, they said, hey, it would have been great if we had just pushed the residential back and let commercial be in the front, front along that road. Now that would have made really, really good sense. And I wasn't part of anything back then. They didn't have a vote back then. But it was done the way it is now, it's what it is. We still have this one piece of land. I don't know what's going to happen to that one piece of land because I don't, I don't have a Chris Law. But I am very, very hopeful that as commerce comes this way and commercials over here. I am hopeful that that piece of land can still be a commercial land for Madison. I don't know what it's look like. I've been told it's really, really this, that or the other. I don't know because I don't know what's going in that corner. Maybe something can bridge over, maybe it can be part of, maybe something can happen. But I just, I just look at it and go, this is our opportunity. And there were someone in the planning question that also looked at this way. There's an opportunity to keep a commercial spot in this piece of property. So that's how I am looking at this piece of property. Looking at it, we just stay, egg until something's along. That's commercial, retail, something else. And maybe I'll be wrong. Maybe I'm gambling the wrong way on this one. But I would at least like to give it, give it, there's just really no rush. We don't have to rush down to the line in any of this. I truly believe that. End of my two cents.
Earlier tonight, Mr. Spencer said, I'm going to paraphrase because I couldn't write fast enough to quote you. There's an odd amount of land and it's important that we use it to the best of the, to the best use of the city. Or something to that effect. Well, that's also true for our commercial land. I told, I don't know if you remember, the very first time I was in a council seat and you came to talk about this, what my problems were with this subdivision. They're minor, but they're not mine. Doing away with all potential commercial in this area, Brownsbury will be five lanes. State of Alabama is coming in and they've said that, that's going to happen. You know, they move slow, who knows? It could be five years before that happens. But in five years, if this passes, there, there won't be any commercial property there on that front edge. Five years ago, county line road didn't look like county line routes now. There was still some farmland over there. We have to plan ahead and we have to preserve commercial property. That is the only way we're going to be, be able to support our roads and the infrastructure that we need, we need to be. We have got to increase our revenue streams. And we not keep going back to our residents for increased taxes. That's all I have.
Be one years. One years. Can you hear me now? Try not to yell at you. So you've been here thirty one years.
Yes, sir.
So you've got quite a bit of experience with, with revenue.
Yes, sir. I think so.
I'd like to think so too. So you've seen this standard of growth and those types of things. Our top three revenue sources for sales tax, can you tell me what, what those are like for me to mention them?
It would be Walmart, I think it's Kroger.
Just not, not names, just overall categories?
Grocery stores, building materials and restaurants.
Okay. And in those top fives, two building materials, there's one outside the city and inside the city.
That's right.
Okay, okay. And that is, that does not include when we go to, say, Lowe's to buy material? Or does it? That's a category for correct.
That would go under home services and building materials into the city. That'd be like Lowe's, Lowe's, I mean, company, so forth.
Correct, correct. So those revenue streams are in the top, the top five at least, right?
Yes, yes.
That comes building homes and building, building, or increase maybe.
It would come from building homes, you know, concrete, somebody bought some potted plants, take to their house, whatever.
And would it also include building commercial?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. That's, so that's really what I wanted to know, is the money, the city, for the sales tax from, from building. Also, the other part, the ad valorem tax, which comes from homes and those that pay that ad valorem tax?
That would be true, yes.
Okay, okay. I'm good, Cameron. I just, you're, you're the professional, you've been here thirty years. I've only been five now, not even five, but, but it feels like it. But anyway, you know, I just wanted your, your opinion on it.
Any other questions, don't hesitate to ask.
Thanks, sir. So.
He has given out, he has given out the number on the building. The building supply, he has provided us with the numbers on a yearly base. And it showed they did go up, well, a little over a million dollars in between nineteen and twenty.
I believe it did, there was a lot more, but the price of builders also did go up.
Yeah, it was. So he's provided that for us and how it is important to the city. If you work out, can you divide it by three forty? Would that be like a per house or would that not really be an even? You know, okay, if you take all the revenue for this building supplies, just out of the city and divide that three forty, which is our average number of homes built per year, would that give you kind of what the, what the sales tax per house?
Give you an idea, but that would also from concrete for curbs, it would include asphalt to build the roads, pipe for drains, things like, so it wouldn't be just for the homes, it would be like everything's going on in the subdivision also.
Okay, because I have done the number, it's about twelve thousand in the team and about sixteen thousand. You just use the building material, the two building materials and divide it by three forty, which kind of gives you a rough estimate of what has come in. Right, right? Am I okay? All right, so, so yeah, there is about sixteen thousand per house that comes into the city. And it was about twelve thousand. Okay, it's, if you want to just divide those numbers out.
So my point is, I'm done. Somebody else got questions? My point is, is that's one of our top revenues because I think, I think, what, about forty categories of taxes?
About, about twenty five to thirty five.
Okay. So about thirty, thirty, thirty categories. And that's, you know, that's the top percentage of the income for city. Okay, the city. And then on the other side is the schools. That ad valorem tax, complete different tax. You agree? Okay, so that's, that's a completely different tax. So the city gets ad valorem tax from a home and it gets more from a home than it does from a vacant piece of land.
That would be correct.
And it also, also sales tax when they're building that home and sales tax when the person improves that home and sales tax when there's someone living in that home, particularly if there are more people in the home. So to say that building does not generate income is just unfair. The other thing that is not getting an account, the people that are building those homes, I fast food. So that's another, another sales generator. So we have to take, take this whole thing into perspective and not be so, we can't just demonize people that are in the boat with us. I've said this last council, I'll say it council. We're all in this boat together. If we do not bail, if we got one person bailing water in and one person bailing water out, we will sink. So to say that, you know, you know, we don't have a plan, we have a plan. To say that that plan is perfect, no way. That plan will improve, but the thing is, is we, we have, we have an opportunity over the next three years to work to go to make it a better plan, almost a better plan if we can, because the next council that's in can have a completely different opinion. Regardless of what happens, that, we have to have some building some kind of. Do we wait, wait or twenty years? Do we wait another ten years? I have, I haven't heard from Mary Beth that anyone wants to develop that commercial. And with of that property, to how, how long it is, you know, trying to get roads, roads in there to develop it partially, that's, that's a really narrow piece of property. I mean, to try to, try and do that. So, you know, we have an opportunity to do something or we can let it, let it sit out as a, as a piece of agricultural land and collect less taxes on it. So that's all I've got.
Thank you.
That's, if that's all we got.
Huh? Hold on, Renee may want to speak.
You might want to, you might want to claim that. How you want to go forward or is that a funny?
No, it's, it's, no, it's fine. I've got something to say, but you.
All right.
And I think we're.
No, ma'am, we're just in council discussion right now.
I'm just, I'm going to try and put a positive note on this. I mean, I just came from southeast Alabama where I grew up, where there's nothing, chicken houses. And, you know, a nice area, but when you talk about education systems, you talk housing and you're talking about anything else. How about growing and dying, that area is dying. about growing and dying, that area is dying. And how blessed are we to be in a situation where people, people want to come here, here. I mean, people want to come to our, our schools, people want to build here. People, people, fact that we can, we can have a conversation about how do we want to grow? And not what school do we need to close down? Or what, you know, what, what building are we going to condemn? Isn't that to, to say, hey, how, how can we save what we got? I mean, had, had, had this guy with a mentor of mine who was a city councilman from hometown. And he's talking about these kinds of things, these discussions that have council of, hey, how, how do we, how do we peanut plant, plant open? How do we do this and that? I mean, what's are we to be able to have this discussion? It's painful, right? It's 10 o'clock, o'clock, been here four hours. All right, the last one for, for us. But how, would you rather be having this discussion? Would you rather be having a discussion about how, how do we keep the peanut, peanut plant open? A positive note, thank goodness, thank God, growing. All I have to say about that, about that. Very, very much. Run, 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 run.
Okay, John, you're right.
What's that?
You're right.
All right.
Mark the day, day, mark.
Can you say that again?
You're right, John. Uh, we are fortunate. And I've said it at the beginning of my, of my first plan, I am so optimistic about the future of Madison. And, and Teddy, I'm really, really sorry you were offended by the comments that, that I made about wanting to have an updated, comprehensive plan. The challenge of the times. And that is it. Now, when it, when it comes to ballots, let me get focused on this. I don't think it's an either or proposition of, and I don't think so hard up for cash because we know what our revenue's been increasing, seeing right with sales tax. It's not like we got to have that development today to survive. All right, we, we think is we can, can be a little cheesy. But what I really wanted to understand, understand about Bell, I went back to read the November 21st, 2019 planning committee meeting minutes of the first Bellwood. How did we get to this point? And saw what was that former council member Mike, Mike Potter and Dr. Terry Johnson, who were on the planning commission, had a lot of questions about, about change West Side master plan for this new, new plan for residential. And the thing that Councilman Potter, former Councilman Potter said, said, that's reflected in the minutes, was he lamented that we were, we were losing our last chance for the last commercial corridor down Huntsville, Huntsville, Brownsville. He commented that, that when that land came in, and I even called it to get additional history, understand when that land came, came into Madison. He and Councilman Haraway were eyeing that because they knew that Huntsville wanted to get that commercial corridor. And they didn't, they didn't until to get it all. So they needed to bring in some of this to Madison. And so even though, uh, uh, the mixed use designation was to further what was going on at the village, village of Oakland Springs and also a recognition that Huntsville, Brownsville, Brownsville Ferry is, which now it's told us at work session, is, is really going to go five, five lane. And so it is that lament that we have very little property left that is appropriate for commercial and industrial. I'm instantly on the lookout for those things. And that is really the thing that I question about the whole Bellwood's concept. I don't see the rush at homes. I don't see that it's, it's Madison's responsibility to house everybody that's coming into North, North Alabama. And I don't hear Huntsville, because right across the street, Karen, she and this, they've got zoning, it's village business district. That's what Hunts, Hunts eyeing it for. You don't hear them saying, let's build some more houses so we can build a commercial. They don't have to because we're doing, we're doing it. I, I mean, that's the problem with Bellwoods. That's, that's it, pure bull. And so I'm, I'm just going to leave that. And it, and it does make a difference to me when the two, two chairs of Growth Impact Committee that were looking at our numbers based on the West Side Mass Plan, they voted against changing the West Side Master Plan on, on Woods. And, and so that is a plan, let's stick with it. Let's stick with what it says until we have something better that we can all agree on. But if we go in this thing 12 times, and just for the record, I want y'all to know, Teddy and I have, have lots of conversations on the phone because we're on finance. He and I get along just great. Apparently, apparently the only, he gets mad at me is at a public meeting. So I don't want all to be worried about that, okay? I plan, I plan on continuing to have great conversations with Teddy on finance. And so I think we're good. And I just, just want to set that record straight. It matters to me when they say no. That, and it, and it matters to when a former council member who sat here, here and he'll bring that property in, really, really, I'd as the last commercial corridor. So that, so that's you. That's it.
Everybody good?
Gee, no, I'm not contagious. Mary Beth, can, can I ask you real, real quick? Or maybe Mr. Spencer, I don't know. Ask the question and then we'll.
He'll be having to answer for me.
Well, I, I, you answered it since you're here on stage there. Your, your outlook for the city and the city only. Um, not, not that he hasn't, hasn't, I mean, he's a property owner here rather than I've, almost, well, maybe longer than I've been alive. Um, I'm, I'm not, I'm not telling us anybody your age or anything. Oh, oh, in that piece of property, how wide is it?
Jeez, Johnny probably, probably would know that. Yeah, I was going to say 380, but all right.
An idea of 380 feet, it is maybe from the corner here to where, where, basically where.
Use Plaza.
Yeah.
Football field.
Football field.
There you go, there you go. Football field, that's, that's pretty easy, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So what's the chance, chance of roads in there that would port commercial property go all, all the way back 30 acres?
Uh, not, not.
Have you had anyone commercially try to, try to do anything there?
No, and, and I, I did report out the last council meeting on this topic that I, that I just had a conversation with a commercial broker about another property, property in Huntsville, Brownsville Ferry further to the east, which is a corner property, which would be much, much more valuable. And about how difficult, what, what, trying to get anybody to develop even a corner on Huntsville, Huntsville, Brownsville. Just because, one, primarily because traffic counts very, very, very low. That will change, change over time, obviously. Um, but yeah, we've had, um, really no interest in doing, doing any kind of commercial development. Now, Village of Oakland Springs is, you know, they have a mixed use, use approved by the planning commission. And we have about 16,000, I think it is square, square feet of commercial space with residential a little above and apartments and so forth. And that will be, will be red entrance to the, the village at Oak Springs. And, and, you know, they're experienced with doing the Providence project. So we're hopeful that they'll be successful. And they're very, very, you know, visionary folks. But there's nobody's interested.
So, you know, let's all agree that, that we are going to have a five, five lane at some point. That.
Long time from now.
There is a house there. And it's, that land is valuable enough to develop control.
Mm-hmm.
Someone will come and buy those houses, polish them and build something.
They could.
Because that just had a cross.
There's just a lot of, when you, when you doubt that road, roadway, there is a lot of frontage. Some it's in the city limits and zone deck, some of it's, it's unincorporated. That is a lot, a lot of frontage to fill. Like if, 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 let's say Bellwood, Wood's, Lups, right? And all the rest went commercial, would be too much commercial development. And I know that sounds odd, but it, it just would too much commercial. The, the area could not, could not support all of that commercial development. All the commercial development on Highway 72 and County Line. There's just, there's just not enough, enough people to support commercial, commercial inequality. You could have search places, but they don't make revenue, you know, now it's, yeah.
So, I mean, that's kind of, kind of the thing, one of the, one of the reasons I made my decision. The other thing is, um, you know, when, when all of zerts happened and when the, there, where town Madison is, we had a tremendous amount of, amount of people come, you know, and say, I don't want commercial, commercial, I'm residential.
Right.
So I, you know, I just take that in account, count to, you know, I'm, I'm ready to vote, I'm done.
All right. For the vote, please. For the vote, Miller.
Councilmember Sipert.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Ralesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzy.
Aye.
And motion, passion passes.